بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم سؤال شديد وحوي أن سؤالا بنا منكال السؤالي مركور يسوعه على الله يهاي امانت كان واتي ميد آآ أدباد نارتي هو هاستاهاي مندالوا السؤالا بنا من السؤالي آآ سؤالا بنا من السؤالي دونا آآ وحابا كتينا قوليزيتي آآ هدو امها كونغانكرتا سؤالا سيلو سو لو السؤالي وهدو امهل كويالله وهدو الغيابادو كاينا آآ كاعا وسيت
I appreciate, I thought you were maybe asking a question about the bow tie. But, uh, no, I will come, I mean, yes, I'm a human being as we all are and and lot of good questions, lot of good ideas, and I will come back. And if I'm not doing a good job, let me know.
السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته. أنا أدبي سلامي يا دمان غيار تشرفت له. آآ قلت وقت قد قال لك اه ام نشان نويمت and so we just couldn't hear it. But in a new way, it's a matter of knowledge about an hell no. I'm gonna tell you that's a doorman, you know, who's who would do a hard digmo ihar kauni. Uh, for the last month, um, year in. Uh, inshallah, who had a donut friend themka or schoolka arentisa. How you man dono, poor committee, they could bring a no shake to a poor no share head dono. We have for some who he dona in a we did no, he's a well, I'm a good one.
People and have benefits and, and opportunity for advancement. And I'm talking about manufacturing, light manufacturing, distribution centers, med tech, agribusiness and others that really can broaden the, the economic base here in Rochester. We all know that IBM isn't what it used to be here in Rochester. So broadening that tax base. And then that also then brings in more commercial industrial taxpayers to, to take that burden off of, of residents. So two, two issues that are key for me, but it really comes down to those community connections. It's, it's building trust and respect for each other. It's something that I've done my life, my whole life and, and I, I love meeting people and finding out how they, what their perspective is on our city. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Sala, and see if there's any questions.
Let me first briefly translate what you have said. So, and Insha Allah. Wa ha'da'idu dulu maro'ha. Ba'dan ba'takasahallay. Ta'arih lezuka'awaramei. Me'luqasoshakayi. Enu ma'gadana kashakayi. Arimaha bulshida. Sidha mpu'a ha'ma'gadha qurhenteyda. En mpu'a ha'danka polosigiyi. Mpu'a ha'shro'atki. Wa'ka'semiayi. Wa'hu'umimisanu'utartama'aynaita'hai. En arimaha guriyainu'wa'ka'qabta'siba. Qaybta'keradakiradadakoradu ka'aysa. Eni guriyalehalla karesan karohchaban. En ayuhogasariyah. Madam masaya niftisoukousoukorei. Guriyaha mpu'a ha'alu. Inka'mka'unaqano. Marka en koyskeegi osa'aha. Marka madame ta'san daransana'hai. Bahaydodat ke'uchirutaman. Eni dadat badan awudila iha ta'guriyaki rada'ku qaliwdi. Enan ta'wahbadan ka'qabta'siba. Ka'lan shakoin aborno. Kilaya inay mpu'a ha'nuqon. Me'ya kilaya ma'gadha'ide jokto. Wa'hu'win la'ke shirkada kalawawin ma'gadha'ena imadan. Odad ke'shaka'abor lo'sa'mayio. Harfada'ka'ri na'molba'ydala feirna. Ma'gadha'na IBM ba'ka'furana jertaydi kusogartei. La'kin man'teytka'ola tartamazachinesu chugin. Shirkada'ka'la'inesan ka'chirin. Oronti'ekuhi lika'adat ke'ina mpu'a ha'kor. Osouka'ado. Shakoin kodi. Harfada'ho'adan ka'seytu. En marka arimaha suronti'adogan. Awachi'ei. En kolbe Insha Allah ento'gu nuhurka'awin. Hada'ka so'qabto. En marka wixi'su'alaa qabtin wa'dian Insha Allah dula'ira'do. En mpu'a ha'kusodu'adu. En ha'danka guriyanu'ka'hallay. Ompu'a ha'en, en guriyaydissedona serigil. La'kin da'qarkot qaliwan nuqonayan. Guriyaha wa'qaliw. Sidha lojchamin ha'danka zahwaqebu kayiri. Marka edana ta'san dadatka'usibdadatka'ugu hu'raywili. Angadanin mpu'a ha'guri'auan lehen. Orachene'yahanka'kuchirene'guriyay'shan. First time home base lo'yaqano Insha Allah dula'ira. Marka tanar en mpu'a ha'wa'ka'hallay. Marka wixi'su'aloo danka'ankabno. Guriyaha edan ka'seytu'io. Ma'gadha'ra Rochester. Wa'han'slayana'hai. Enan lo'ba'ha'eman'tilega beddo'lo. Wihu'utartamiwa ma'gadha'ra. Wihu'usamaydona shro'wa ma'gadha'ra. Da'qala'ha ma'gadha'ra. Wa'hu'ha'ka beddali dona. Iba'jit kusamaydona. Marka samaydona. Marka danka'slayana Insha Allah dula'ira'do.
Okay, Randy, thank you for coming here. So as community leader, we have many questions coming from the parents, especially the youth. So as you know, we used to have the YMCA, no longer. We have the right very expensive. Most of our community low income. So if you win this chair or City Council President, are you planning to help them, the diversity kids, to get the space, to get the sport or activity? Also, we have another issue for the youth program. Some, you know, that are getting druggists. Do we get trouble? So sometimes the parent comes to me and saying that my son, you know, needs help. How you can help us? So when I talk to some people, they told me that if 18 and above, parent cannot make decision. So if you win, so what is your plan for that, you know, that youth program? Absolutely. Great question, Omar. So when I go door knocking, one of the top issues that I hear is that we do not have enough activities for our youth. And we have, we have 136 parks in Rochester, but only 32 of them have the bare essentials as far as a shelter. So we really, as the city grows, we need to have those amenities and that, those recreational activities across the city of Rochester. And it's so important for our youth to have something productive and healthy for them to have those activities. So I will really look at the city budget. I mean, we're, we are growing as a city and we have to be able to, to meet the needs of a growing population. And that's why I talk about commercial industrial tax base. And then I see Representative Andy Smith in the back. One of the other areas that we can work on to get more revenue here in Rochester is Rochester getting its fair share from the state of Minnesota when it comes to local government aid. So he can maybe talk about that. And then the, the second piece as far as needing our youth to stay away from drugs. One of the things that I will do as a city council member is really work with our county and our social service and safety net organizations. I used to work for a nonprofit organization that worked on the needs for, for people with, with concerns. And so it's really important that the city, the county, and that those social safety net organizations work together in lockstep to keep our, our youth safe.
En sudu yiri. Umar nu'su'alayi. Wa'ha'ehet. Danka danayira'de. Youth kma'ha'ka'abondona ta'siba. Madam YMCA le'haray. Haljimouin ma'gadha'ukyal. Entabandatka'qali ku nuqon dono. Wuli'ya'ha'ymarka de mpu'a ha'pa'galfarabadan ma'gadha'ukyalu. Kuwa'inde blo'ha'ba'yo. Iba'jit ka'seyti'ga'nan hosu feirino. Wa'han'husu kordinka'na Insha Allah dula'ira'do. So'okalana stateka. Galarhanalichow mpu'a ha'Andy Smith or representative no'e District 25B. En mpu'a ha'marka asagana'nan mpu'a ha'da'rentasqala'halno. Stateka wihu'oga'adanda'qala'na. Ma'gadha'na dibu'usu'el Insha Allah dula'ira'do. And just another question that follow up with that. I'll give it to you, Adan, just in a minute. So when we, when we talk about youth, that means mostly our neighborhoods are either over policed or sometimes under policed, which is really, both of them are not good for us. When we are over policed, that means our kids are more in trouble rather than either rehabilitative programs or making sure that our kids are rehabilitated rather than just being jailed and build a record for them that they can be, be coming rather than. So restorative justice or other, other aspects of it. But when we are under policed and the crime rises over there, just don't go over there. The houses go down and, and inhabitable neighborhoods becomes that way. In some places right now, we know, especially places like such as Middle Park, the housing is really ridiculous and needs to be transformed, even though we know the housing is condemned, but yet people continue to live in those places. So that's partly an housing issue, but partly also as well as also an youth issue and crime basically as well. But we're not asking for either over policing, under policing, but we're asking real, looking down and talking to the communities and discussing what is really the necessary need, but also diversifying the police force also as well. When we ask, we always been told, oh, there's one Somali and there's one black guy. That does not, Rochester BIPOC community is 30%. That is really unacceptable when it comes to that. When we have a community of color that's almost 30%, that needs to change. We need to see our people and people that represent culturally, language wise, who are sensitive to our communities that can have a really mutual understanding when it comes to that. We need real recruitment in those neighborhoods. But when the discussion happens, we hear, oh, there's a good chief of police who's trying to do that, but we're not seeing those changes since he was appointed basically. But we really need to see really, really, and, and chances on that. So I'll let you answer so before I ask any more questions.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you so, so much Sala for sharing that. I will hold the police accountable and I, I truly believe that a police force should look like its community. So thanks, thanks for, for sharing that. And also really holding the police accountable for community, community policing and really first having a police that, a police department that looks like the community and then a police department that is there in the community, not just when problems arise.
So Asha'wi di'oh. Wa'ha'ehetun. Danayira'ku sayso. Ha'ani'ra'qarkot. Marka anku badanana'ha'ed. Sidhatka'medu. Halaga sobbadiya. Buliska'misewa'alu'yaraya. Labada'su'wadehesa. Eni jogin de koruqada amni'yarado. Humado'io. Eni mpu'a ha'halaga sobbadiyo. De mduhki'usouqada. Habsilu'ua'adu. La'kin en wihlaga beddo. Habsirani'alu'gurin. Lo'sa'mayda'ani'ali'nyo. Arinta'arinkeduwin. Sidhokalana mpu'a ha'de. Ma'gadha'buliske'du. Wa'ka'ha'ma'gadha'ntayla'ekta'hai. Ba'olki'wasoudanma. Ma'gadha'man'tiku jo'una. De'ldodatka'medu. Wa'hamesha'jo'una labenno medu'wa'ka'shakaysa mpu'a ha'bulis. Wa'han'beddala edana. Marka arinta'sanu'hu'oga chuwawi. Wuli'ya'ha'yi. En wuli'hasaptamidono. Buliska'skunudeyidono. Wa'han'leda'beddo'lo. Enen u'ka'zan.[592.83]